I'd like to call tonight's Brookline Select Board Meeting to order. It is May 5, 2021, and according to my computer, it is 6:32 PM. Welcome, everyone. Are there any changes to the agenda?
One.
All right, Mr. Mello, what change do you see?
Strike 3D.
3D, okay, Sally Perry, all right, very good. We'll talk about that when we can. Anything else on the agenda?
I don't think so.
Okay, I do want to make a point, I think Stan pointed this out to me. When I type up the agenda, anything that's on in the agenda can be discussed and voted upon. Any agenda item, we can also table an agenda item or remove...
Uh-oh. Losing your dot.
...item. I have, I had to discuss...
Losing your dot.
Where I have discuss and vote, I, you know, any, any agenda item can be, unless, I believe so, any agenda item can be discussed and voted upon as long as it's on the agenda. If something is added to the agenda, we can't vote on it until it's been posted. Duly warned, okay.
Well, all right, Dot, I don't want to sidetrack us with the discussion, but we could, we could have a lengthy discussion about things that are within the, that might conform to the letter of the open meeting law as opposed to the spirit of the open meeting law. So I, maybe that's a discussion for another time, but having something that you're going to vote on that you've given no detail about in the agenda other than it being an agenda item, I personally don't think is in keeping with the spirit of the open meeting law. So, but...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
We can, we can discuss that some other time if we need to.
Right, there's a reason why I brought that up is because when things come up under Old Business, they've been already discussed many times, so. And if you find that there is a protocol that is, that I am doing that you find, or a policy that you find that is uncomfortable with, please, please voice it with me and I certainly will address it. All right, let's take a look at the amendments from April 21, 2021 Select Board Meeting. We'll take a look at, there's two pages, anything on page one that needs to be edited or modified? I didn't find anything.
Just in the third paragraph under scheduled members of the public, Miss Nah should be Miss Now's or Miss Nah's opinion, just to spell now.
N-A-U.
You see where that is, Peter?
I can't find the file at the moment, I'll get it.
Yeah, just her name just needs to be corrected, that's all.
All right, so we're correcting the spelling for Mrs. Nah.
Yep, and then also down under the Old Business Broadband and Wi-Fi section, in the second paragraph, the second to last sentence ends that the town would be responsible, would be responsible for payment for the repeater on the pole.
No, I didn't see.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's actually what we intended to say, if we did say that. So I think that should probably just be stricken, probably. You see where that is, Peter?
I remember it, because you did say it, but I will strike it.
Okay, I mean, maybe somebody can clarify. I, my recollection is we were saying that there wouldn't be any cost to the town for putting this up somewhere.
I'm sorry, David, can I just add something? The town would be responsible to supply the internet. Unfortunately, I mean, fortunately, the town doesn't pay for internet because it's a, something that Comcast gives it, gives to us. But whoever has that connection must be the party that's giving the internet accessibility and will have to pay for it.
So that's probably what was referred to. The town would be responsible for paying for internet. Paying for the internet, which we do in Town Hall, which, which we get covered in Town. We're not paying for the repeater. Okay, there would no additional costs associated with that, but thank you, David. I didn't, I, you know, Peter, this is so small, I have a hard time. All right, let's look on page two.
There was a request for a smaller font last year, I think, to save paper or something.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a preference?
Well, I mean, I rewrite on it, I mean, I can make do, but sometimes I just won't catch some spelling error in that because it's very small for me, but. Anything on page two?
Not for me.
Okay, all right.
The only, sorry, I did have something, sorry.
Yep.
Under Select Board Chair Report, there's just an extra "that" at the end of the first line. The first line ends, and that, that, the contract, so we just need to remove one of the "that's." That was the only thing that I had.
All right, thank you, David. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the Select Board minutes as revised from April 21, 2021. May I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by David. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, minutes as amended from Wednesday, April 21, 2021, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? All right, very good, minutes are approved as amended, thank you. Okay, the next scheduled members of the public, I'd like to welcome Mr. Noga to the Select Board this evening. He is, we're going to vote on the appointment of Mr. Noga to our select vote. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Stanley Noga Jr. to the Brookline Select Board for the remaining of the, of the one-year term. Oh, may I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gwen Tanza, any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor of appointing Stan Noga to the Select Board for a one-year vacant Select Board seat, signified by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none. Stan, you are now, have been appointed to the Select Board again. Thank you very much, looking forward to working with you. At this time, I'm going to ask my town clerk, Tanza, to administer the oath of office.
Hi, Stan, you have, hopefully, the oath of office in front of you.
You have to take your mute off.
Stan, you're muted.
Yeah, I just, I just unmuted myself. So I am now, I have the form.
Okay, if you would, I, Stan Noga do solemnly swear, if you could read that.
Yes, I, Stanley E. Noga Jr., do solemnly swear that I will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont and that I will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the Constitution of government thereof, so help me God, under the pains and penalties and perjury at Brookline this fifth day of May, 2021.
Okay, that was the Vermont Oath of Allegiance. Now, if you would take the oath of office?
Sure thing. I, Stanley E. Noga Jr., do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of selectment for the state of Vermont and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of my judgment and ability according to law, so help me God, under the pains and penalties of perjury dated at Brookline this fifth day of May, 2021.
Okay, I hereby certify that on the fifth day of May, 2021, personally appeared before me Stanley Noga Jr. of Brookline, Vermont, took and subscribed to the foregoing oaths and affirmations of office and allegiance. Thank you very much, Stan, and welcome to the Select Board.
Thank you, with my gratitude and thanks to all members current who took that vote. And just a point of clarification, I'm going to show you this form, guy. You want me to sign in this location and down here, it's not to be signed by a witness?
No, no, when you come into the office, I would just ask you to sign in front of me and I will sign the signature of the notary public or the person, so you're all set.
Okay, very good, we'll see you tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, so we shall now move on to the next part, Joseph Dutton, regarding the Round Schoolhouse's $5,000 grant plan. There was a discussion to be had this evening on the scope and sequence for the project that would be used to enhance the work around Schoolhouse using monies from a grant from the Preservation Society. So Joseph, what did you find out? And you spoke to Ben Doyle?
All right, good evening, everyone. So after the Select Board meeting, the last Select Board meeting, I sent an email out to Mr. Ben Doyle, just letting him know everything that we discussed and what we would potentially want to spend the money on if it was okayed by them. And so that were, what we had talked about was having Serpro do a kind of professional deep clean. And then having someone, potentially Norm Holden, restore the windows and the window sills. And then using the remainder of the funds to work on the shed, the outbuilding there. He said that everything sounded good, but it seems as though they just want to see the proposals of work prior to releasing the funds. The one thing that he, that they are more, most interested in is the window restoration. They, they just want to know that the proper materials are being used to restore the building. And he sent me the contact info for one of their field representatives that he would like me to reach out to. So I have started, I've drafted a part of an email that I was going to send to her after discussing this with you, of what we want to move forward with. Since they're pretty much okay with, with all those ideas that we had, if the board decides that they would like to move forward with those, we can then reach out to the prospective contractors and get an actual statement of work, a contract. And then I'll just shoot that over to both Mr. Ben Doyle and the field representative, Mrs. Lisa Ryan is her name. And that way, they'll just review that. And I would assume it'll be a pretty quick turnaround after that, then we'll work to release. So, yeah, that's, that's the next thing, is just getting those, well, you have to just know if you actually want to move forward with all of those things and then we can move to get those contracts, so I'll turn it over to you.
All right, so you're saying you started to write, you started a draft email to the field representative, Lisa Ryan, is that what, that, was that correct?
Ben Doyle.
Yeah, yeah, so, not Ben Doyle, Lisa Ryan. Yeah, and so what I was just waiting on to finish this is what you guys, what the board would actually want to for sure spend the money on. That way I can tell her the board has, you know, if it's everything that we spoke about, then it's pretty simple. But I, I didn't want to say, hey, you know, I need your help figuring out how, like, if it's okay to have Serpro clean this, if you guys, if the board doesn't want to have Serpro actually clean it. So, you know, everything that we spoke about last week, they're okay with it. So if the board decides we want to move forward with it, I will then let her know that we actually want to move forward with that and that we're working on getting contracts that I'll be sending over to her and if there's anything else specifically that she will need.
So basically, she, it was either relinquish, relinquish the $5,000 grant and do nothing or to follow up and to develop a scope and sequence. So you don't have that for tonight for us to revise or send out or anything, okay.
Well, I guess I don't fully understand. They, they, they just want to know if we, like what we spoke about, he said that that's all acceptable uses for the funds, but they just want to, they would just want to follow up on it. Like if we, like one of the things he said specifically for the window work, they would want to know, they would want to have like a contract that outlines the materials and methods used for the restoration.
Right, so that, I guess that's what, if you want me to work on developing any scope and sequence letters, I need to sit down with you and go over how many windows and all, all that you just referred to. Stan, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, the copy of the letter from Mr. Doyle that I read led me to believe that, Dorothy, your comments about scope of work and estimates was a part of what he, they, Preservation Trust Group wanted to see, whether it goes to the field officer first or the, the CEO or president, whatever his title is. So however that gets done is, you know, something that might need to be worked out. But I, I seem to recall, but I don't have it in front of me, that the verbiage that was offered by the gentleman was, as you described a moment ago. It's just not an assumption that what's going to happen is what was talked about on the phone. They apparently want to see something in writing.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, they want to see something in writing, okay.
See, I think we're all in, in understanding. My point is that I, I didn't want to assume that we were going to move forward with any of those ideas until the board votes on it. If I'm not mistaken, it is the board's decision and the board would have to, to vote on what we would even potentially pursue.
Right, I thought that we would have tonight a list of what we wanted to pursue, but we don't have a list of what, what, a written list from the committee of what needs to be done. So we're going to have to put this until the next meeting. And in the meanwhile, I believe, I'll, I'll survey this to the other Select Board members in a minute, but I guess we'll have to sit down with your, with Joseph, with you and Cynthia and or Doug to come up with a list of what work needs to be done. So let's, let me go through.
She's going to go around and ask people.
Okay, Gwen, do you want to say something?
Shouldn't, when this discussion is made with Joseph and Cynthia and everybody, shouldn't Bruce also be put in this since he's our building, building commissioner thingy?
Okay, Bruce, what do you feel about that?
I'm fine with it, I, you know, I'll be gone next week for the five days, but other than that, I'm good with that, but I have other things to answer to other than what Gwen just pertained to. If Dave wants to chime in, I'll go at the end.
Okay, Gwen, is there anything else? But that's a good point, Bruce, because he's building commissioner. David?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just wanted to make sure we make somewhat productive use of Joseph's time and our time. I guess I will say, from my standpoint, the restoration of the windows, the cleaning of the, of the site and the work on the beam in the shed, which I'm assuming, Joseph, you got clarification that Ben Doyle said that was also acceptable work to do within the scope of the grant?
Yeah, I, I discussed how we wanted to do extra work on the outbuilding and yes, he said it was okay.
So I mean, I guess I just want to say I'm fully in support of us doing this and doing what the committee members have lined up as the most judicious use of the money. So prior, I, I think it would be good for us to at least come out of this making sure that Joseph and the committee have our essential blessing on pursuing, formalizing these multiple things that they talked about. If somebody doesn't think we should replace, do the shed work or doesn't think we should work on the windows, we should say that now so we don't waste a couple of weeks of it being developed only to then argue about why we don't want to do that work. So I'm saying I'm in support of all of that.
Right, okay, Stan?
I will echo David's very apt statements. I certainly feel that the members of that committee are capable, got good judgment. The parts of the discussion I heard at the last Select Board meeting, I thought were valid and, and meritus. So I definitely support what they're doing. It's, it's my concern, if I have any, is that, I know Joe and the group are all on this. I kind of had the feeling that a proposal, formal proposal would have been available today, but, you know, as long as it's done in a timely fashion, hopefully by the next meeting. I wonder if Joe simply put together a proposal based on his discussion and what he knows about and then have those people that are going to be hired to do it, put out a scope of their work, join the two together and have it done in a very concise manner, if that's possible. And, and then through this a few times, I certainly would value whatever input you might have on that as well in terms of reviewing it, looking at it, whether you wish to spend the time formulating it. All that's fine with me.
Okay, great, thank you. Bruce?
Okay, let me see. First off, I'd like you to know that Mark and I spent a considerable time, amount of time in the building. The two things that came to my mind when Joseph started in talking was, one, about the cleaning by Serpro. I will reach out, Serpro was supposed to give me a response. We had discussed quote unquote "alternatives" on what to do with it, with the, with the Round Schoolhouse, specifically the inside, obviously, and he didn't do that. So I need to follow up with him as I've been keeping in communication with him about cleaning the town office. The second thing that we haven't spoken about, in fact, I looked at it, Mark brought it up, was of the repainting of the outside sign. We should consider that as well as a part of the scope of the work. Thirdly, I'm thinking, and I mean, this is going to make everybody happy, but I think before the next meeting, we should have an onsite visit, onsite visit, where we put our heads together, decide what we want to do, because time is of the essence. And if we're going to get contractors, not so much the cleaning of, of the inside network, I don't think that's an issue as far as getting that done by, by August 1st and probably plenty earlier. But specifically when you're talking about carpentry work and I know about repainting the sign, that we need to, quote unquote, cut to the chase, come up with our scope of work, come up what we want to do, if we need a contractor, get a quote from a contractor, get, get it going, get a commitment. Well, we have two contractors, we've got the painter, we got Norman. Norman's a pretty good guy, he'll work with us, I feel confident of that, but we need a quote. But, but more importantly, if we're going to do carpentry work, we're going to need to find somebody. And everybody's got a lot of money right now, so this isn't going to be easy. So we're going to have to, I guess, I'm just saying, expediency is a pretty good idea and I would really, really consider having an onsite visit, onsite visit before the next meeting so we can just take twenty, half an hour to look at all the same page and then we can start making contact.
Okay, all right, I made note of what you just said. I would like to add, besides having the historical sign being repainted, that we, we also should have a national historic marker for that building. And I think that would have a cost, I mean, the building has been on the National Register, but there is no marker for that, that I, I know.
Great idea, okay.
All right, well, I also believe that this is something that we should work on sooner than later and to get that grant money, and yes, Joseph, I, I support the idea of moving forward with the, with the renovations to the windows and the sills and the signage and the beams and such. Bruce, I also like the idea of if you wanted to have a, a meeting now, I, I, I'm a little...
Doesn't have to be a big deal, a half an hour would do it, Dot.
Yeah, but I, I know, but it's a called meeting and I have to go and post all of that, so. Okay.
Press it down.
Dot? Gwen?
Is, is there, is there any possible way of getting an extension on this grant?
We've had it for so many years, I don't think so.
Yeah, we've had it for such a long time.
They've asked here, it would be fully expended by August 1st, so this is, that was his wording in, in our letter, so I doubt it. It's not, it's not like the salt shed with this, which we might be able to get an extension. Well, can we have the committee, can I have two select members volunteer to, to meet with Joseph and Doug or whomever at the, so I don't, or do you want to have a full Select Board meeting there, Bruce?
That's entirely up to everybody. But I, you know my limitations, Dot. I'm going to be gone from Monday through Friday, but I'll be here next weekend. So, you know, I created an issue and I made it complicated. So that's up to everybody else. I just think it would be a real good idea, wouldn't take long, you could look around for a minute, come up with some ideas, have like, I'm being redundant, so there's no sense in that.
David, did you want to say something?
I do, I mean, I, I personally don't think we should slow things down by even trying to plan some kind of site visit to do it. I mean, we have a committee and the members of the committee have identified what they think, given the time concerns with the grant and what the needs are, how they think this money should be spent. I support them and I don't, I, I'm not going to offer anything by doing a site visit and I think it's just, it'll just slow down what is already a compressed timeframe, so why bother doing that?
Okay, Stan?
Yeah, I concur with David completely. It's, we're beyond that point. If we had that to be worried about or doubts or reasons to do that, that would have been done long before now.
Okay, I totally agree with David.
Okay, all right, Joseph, let me, let me offer this. If you would like any help in typing up or working out any letters, please give me a call at home or send me an email, I'll be glad to work with you or unless you and Doug want to do it, that's fine. It's just sometimes it's easier for, if you need any help, let me know.
Yeah, so I think my plan would be just to get Norm to actually give us a statement of work and that way he has the materials he's going to use on that and everything. And then if Bruce, if you were already in touch with Serpro, if you could get a contract, a statement of work from them and, and then I was going to reach out to a, a restorative carpenter and see what, what he would have to say and how far potentially three grand could go. And if I have all those contracts, then I think that I certainly would want to sit down with you, Dot, and that way we can add any sort of verbiage or, you know, kind of cover letter to those contracts. So that, that was...
All right, I figured you might need a cover letter if, when you're sending it to the Preservation Society, the Preservation Trust of Vermont. And I certainly can do that under the Select Board Chair position. All right, anything else?
Yeah, Dot, Dot, if I have a word, this is Mark Bills.
Oh, hi, Mark!
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Dot, I just wanted to add, and I, I came in late, I had a hard time getting into Zoom, but, but I wanted to ask if, and maybe it already came up about adding two to three screens in windows at the Round Schoolhouse for circulation throughout the summer months? If that's something that was already talked about or...
No, it wasn't.
All right. Did you note that, Joseph? That might be a good idea for ventilation.
Yeah, that is not, Mark, that's not something that we had thought about or discussed, but I will make a note of that and I'll speak to Doug and Miss Nah about that. And we would talk to...
We were just, okay, we were just thinking that during the summer months, the roof, the, the building is closed up and it would be maybe a benefit to have fresh air circulating, you know, if the windows could be like the top window down several inches on a, on a, a couple walls across from each other, just to... on a a couple walls across from each other, just to to get some dry air in there.
Okay, I think it's a good idea. All right, Joseph, just keep us in the loop. I also I mean, the minutes will come out. Peter has gleaned from our conversation and yeah, Bruce, did you want to add something? Can we move on? Yes, go ahead.
Excuse me. Joseph, I'll get you. Like I said, Surf Pro didn't respond. I'm not gonna email them. I'm gonna call them tomorrow to see if I can get immediate reaction from them so that you have the information as quickly as possible. Okay, I'm good.
All right, yeah, thank you for everything. And I'll be sending emails to, for sure, Dot and Bruce. I'll send you some so we can
Do you, do you think I should, should I put you on the next agenda?
Uh, no, I'm I'm not gonna be here. So, yeah.
The first in June, then?
When's that?
I don't know.
June 3rd or 4th?
Uh, June 2nd.
Yeah, I'll I'll probably be back for that. So I suppose you can pencil me in to the agenda. That way, if I can, I'll let you know, but
Okay, great, okay, very good. All right, well, thank you, Joseph. I appreciate your time on this and look forward to getting that done before the the time runs out for us in August. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joseph. See you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, so we'll move on to item 3D has been dropped. That was the resilience program. We can talk about that later while you dropped it. It's back under old business unless, all right, Bruce, we'll move on.
Yes.
Pretty quickly.
Excuse me, clarification, dropped means the issue is no longer to be considered or the person couldn't be here tonight.
No longer to be considered because it wouldn't happen for several years, Stan. They're only doing pilot projects now for three or four of them. And they're not talking about us this year. It's very preliminary. And they would let us know when it was gonna expand a little bit. They're not even sure about all the funding, on and on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no members, unscheduled members of the public here, no new business that I came across. So then we can move down to the old business. We we did the appointment. We discussed around schoolhouse. The resiliency zone, you're saying, Bruce, is that it's it's not timely for us. It's not appropriate for us at this time.
At this time, maybe 2022 or 23, but right now it's way preliminary because they're only doing about three or four in the entire, in the entire state.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, I can move on to the Wi-Fi hotspot by Town Hall. I was in contact with the Vermont, with the Wyndham Regionals email coordinator, and I was sent a a, I think it's nine pages of a survey, lots of information about the site request. It didn't take very long to do it. And so we're on a list right now. And when they get to Brookline, they'll contact me and and or guy and let us know more about the Wi-Fi hotspot at at Town Hall. So there's nothing else for us to do right now. We just got in on, just got in on the list of of municipalities that are interested in doing, doing this program. Okay, so then we can move to DV fiber in Brookline. Stan, you did a lot of research and I haven't really digested all of it, but you wanted to give us a, an overall summary. And is this I already asked if the David Jones was our David Jones in Halifax.
It turns out there are at least three David Jones involved in this in one way or
David Jones and the monkey.
I have met the, I have met the one from Halifax and we discussed the fact that neither of us in our entire lives prior to that day had ever met another person named David Jones.
There you go.
David Jones on the monk, on the monkeys.
Oh, God.
Thankfully, he's been dead for several years now, though.
Yeah, for a while.
I hope so. They buried him.
As sadly as David Bowie, who was also David Jones.
Yeah, that's true.
They're getting back to the broadband.
All right, is the Stephen John, the Stephen John that I know?
Yes, it is. Matter of fact, this morning, he says, I would love to see Dorothy. I remember her from the school board in Newbrook. And I said, yes, yes, she's she's still being active.
Okay, very good.
That's Stephen Johns from the the school district.
Yes, it is. God, he's busy.
All right, Stan, tell us what you found out or what you would like to see going forward or and such. I know it was a lot of information on here. I did, I'll, I'll, I'll you talk and then I'll tell you what I thought, what I read.
Yeah, I I apologize to you all for the last minute submission of this material to you. I had a terrible time with my computer over the last half week. Switching from various providers and finally settling on Firefox. I finally was able to get stuff through. I you, you probably didn't answer any immediate questions going over the the Communications Unit District's description of what liabilities there are, et cetera, is a real good starting point. As indicated, last time I spoke about this issue, there are no costs to the town. There are no costs to the citizens. There are no liabilities to the citizens or the town in any manner, shape or form on, in the program. The question becomes, do we need it? And is it, would it be fairly constructed to us if we were to be involved? Most of their money is coming from grants, loans from VITA, federal monies made available, like this recent program through the federal government, was it ARPA? And I guess the next year or two, there are significant amounts of money to be put into the program, but we're looking at all of that going to the entire state. And we're talking about a district that is a small part of the matter. And we discussed a number of things if you, when you have a chance to read the email that I sent to Stephen. There were a number of detailed questions and that I asked and he provided answers to. And there are even more things that came up in the conversation. The bottom line is, if I could, if you have any of this paperwork with you, is I would like to direct your attention to one of the white sheets that says selection of state data used in conjunction with a survey. And this was put out by Wyndham Regional Commission. And it's data from the state and federal sources about the road miles in each town in this county, the population, households, 901 addresses, cable locations. The the percentage served with cable and a few other tidbits that we don't need information on. When you look at that list, there are five towns that do not have anyone on cable or internet. Athens, Reedsboro, Whitingham, I think Marlborough has one. So for those individuals, it makes a lot of sense to be involved in this program. For whatever reasons, the service providers that are in business for profit to deliver the services either chose not to be involved with those, or the citizens themselves decided they didn't want them there. I don't know which it was. I didn't get into asking the why's and wherefore's. But those five towns account for 3,707 people in this county that do not have internet at period. So when I'm looking at the structure of the DV fiber, they have, I think, as of last night, when Townsend joined, 24 towns involved in the program. And when you look at the ultimate fees that are gonna be assessed for the people that are in the district. And Stephen and I also discussed about what do the fees seem to be averaging out in some of the other districts? The prices range anywhere from $50 to $100 for internet, which is not very far different from what Comcast has. As a matter of fact, you're Stephen here now. I see him. And and so I'm not sure there's a cost benefit for for Brookline per se in doing this, because as I understand it, the fees that would be assessed any person being served are based on the payback of loans and any other expenses that are applicable across the entire district. And in our town, depending on which statistics you look at, whether they be the ones that I downloaded and sent to you a day or two ago, that was colored, multicolored. We have, so per their data, four individuals in Brookline that appear to be underserved. When I looked at this one, this statistical list that I mentioned a moment ago, that was put forth by the Wyndham Regional Commission. And I don't know why this is the case. It shows 26 underserved individuals in Brookline. The time to build this out is somewhere between, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve. Hope I can call you Steve rather than Stephen, but okay, thank you. I I think it was at a minimum five and at a maximum 10 with the probable probable timeframe being shorter than that, if I understand correctly. So now we're looking at the electrical situation and having reserves and less downtime. And that's a few years away. And this this seems like it's longer away. And I'm not sure that as a town, after sitting down and looking at it, that that Brookline would get certainly not an immediate benefit. And for our numbers, it would seem like there may be some other option for those few people. And I'm looking at those few people that probably don't have it. When I looked at the map that I had also sent you a couple of days ago, it's got the root of the cable connections all through town. And at virtually every road in town is covered except Bennett Road. And there's only two houses on that road that I'm aware of. Purple Mountain Road, which is on the town line in Dumerson. And it looks like the gentleman whose last, whose name I can't remember, but he's at the top of Marsh Lane. Past Kerry Born's house, way up at the top. He, it's a second home for him. It's not a first home. And I don't know if the select board or any town officials have had requests to extend services, but my first thought in getting involved in this was that, hey, if there's an opportunity to bring service to people that would, it would make sense to. I didn't know the numbers, whether we had a large number or a small number. I didn't know what our expenses would be, and they're essentially our minimum. Any expenses that we would have would be through the district. And certainly, as Stephen pointed out in the conversation, the earlier we get in, the better and more input we would have in the whole process. But I don't see any after all said and done, having read the statute, having read 360, parts of Act 30, section, chapters 82, going through the whole process, logging onto the DFS, DPS website, reading their summary and so forth. I I guess I'm at a point where I'm, I I personally feel, and this is why I presented the information to you so you could look at it as well, that it may not be advantageous at this time for us to be involved.
Stephen, would you like to have a few minutes? Welcome. Nice to see you, Mr. Retired Superintendent.
He's not retired, not at all.
Well, neither am I.
No, we keep working, don't we? We keep working on the good projects. Yeah, well, I I find this project very inspiring because I don't see the private sector really having the financial incentive to connect the people who are really out there on the on the peripheral. You know, obviously, the people that are already connected with cable, there's a good business model for them and and the company is making, you know, sufficient profit on on that investment to justify that expense and that investment. But and and Brookline may be more more unique in that people are very few people are in fact not connected or served by cable. And Stan and I were talking about this earlier today. But I do, you know, beg your indulgence to consider the people who are not connected. And in fact, second homes that were mentioned is is a big part of some of, some of the concerns and concern people in our towns. We certainly want the economy to grow and people to continue to find this an attractive place to live and build their homes and raise their families. So that's really my primary motive. I think there's an equity issue. I I just find it intolerable to to be located in a place that I can't get even if I had a million dollars, you know, I couldn't get better coverage. And and that's because, you know, the long term investment isn't there for the private sector. So that's why Communications Union Districts were formed, as the legislature saw there was not going to be a solution to reach everybody and have universal connectivity unless there was a public entity devised to do so. And the only way to get that to happen would be making sure the public entity had no taxation power and no authority to oblige the town of Brookline or any other member of town to pay anything. You know, it's based upon the customers and the the fees that the customers would pay. And that leads us to a very important principle behind the Deerfield Valley Communication District, as well as all the other CUDs. And that is that it has to be accessible to everybody financially. And that would mean that some form of charitable giving or subsidy would be provided so that, in fact, the people of lesser means would be able to take advantage of this economic, educational and and, yeah, and medical opportunities that have been so important during our COVID pandemic. So I, you know, I I don't choose to differ with Stanley at all on on any of these numbers and issues. But I I do know that the towns that have joined have 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 joined because they are determined to provide at least some prospect of a solution for those people that are not served and underserved. And 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 the more towns that we have, of course, the greater the critical mass and and the greater opportunity for leveraging a a public-private partnership and a contract with a lender to get it to happen sooner rather than later. So that's, that's, that's my short little summary of what's going on. I just correct one thing. You, you, Brookline would be, Townsend was the 23rd town to join. The farthest extent of our Communications Union District includes Brattleboro, of course, and down to the border and across to to Stamford. And then you go up north, all the way into Windsor County to Weston as well. And and there is a liaison group that's working trying to see how our Communications Union District could collaborate or benefit by partnering with Bennington's Communications Union District, which is called Southern Vermont CUD. I'd be happy to hear any questions people might have. I I'm certainly here for that purpose and want to encourage you to look into the matter way carefully. And, you know, just share with you that this is not a risky business from the town's point of view. The question is, what's the alternative for getting people connected?
I guess we can go through the select board. Stan, I'll let you speak first. Go ahead.
I I don't want to allow myself to be I guess I'll start from another direction. I fully support the district and its mission and goal. It's, it's needed, it's necessary, and it's a wonderful way to do it. The the concern that that I have is that the individuals who are also gonna be involved in the meetings that are conducted with Vermont Fiber, they're monthly, are they? And also, there's a quarterly mandated and an annual meeting, correct?
Yeah, there is an annual meeting, May 11th. There is, that's by statute. That's when we approve our budget for the ensuing year. And that's the the, we're the new appointees from these areas towns, if they change to whatever would be received and approved. And and then we do meet monthly now, the third Wednesday of of every month is our regular scheduled meeting. There have been additional meetings in our present state of negotiations. We're really presently negotiating with vendors and proposals that they've given us in response to an RFP to build out to every, every location in in the district. to an RFP to build out to every, uh, every location in, in, in the district. So that's, uh, you know, that's requiring, uh, some additional meetings, although the board is more, maybe twice, uh, more recently. Uh, you do have to have a representative, and if, you know, one of the problems that other select boards have faced, uh, is that they don't necessarily have a, you know, a willing or able person to represent, uh, the town on our board. And, uh, so that certainly is a question, and, um, uh, it has caused some hesitancy by some, uh, boards. We do have select board members that are on our board in various towns, uh, Guilford, um, uh, as well as Searsburg. Um, yeah, rattle them all off, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I looked at, you know, the, the percentages as well as the numbers and trying to determine, you know, given that, okay, we're, everyone is equal, uh, the lack of, of payment, uh, I should say the lack of, uh, there being a need for collecting any kind of additional fees or monies, uh, debt service to the district, none of that falls on the shoulders of the citizens or the town, and, and that's a, a good positive aspect of it. But when I looked at, you know, in addition to finalizing my opinion, where do I personally feel about it? Yeah, I looked at our, wow, 94.19%. I looked at Brattleboro, 95.80% coverage. And I'm saying, well, why did they get involved and, and why wouldn't we if I looked at it on that basis? But when you look at Brattleboro's numbers, they're 95%, given the size of their town, is representative of 2,100 people or households that don't have cable, which is a lot different scenario than, than our, our town. And the same for Vernon. You know, you've got a 600 people, uh, difference there with basically 92% coverage. So our, our town doesn't fit the model of many of the people that do find and are rightfully, uh, in favor of getting involved. And I certainly, you know, if the board decided that they wanted to be involved, I would keep my promise of being a rep for the town. Uh, but I've done what I think is appropriate. If there's more data that you don't have that you would like, uh, or if your need for interpretation, I suspect Stephen wouldn't mind talking with you, and based on what discussion I've had, I can try to shed some light on it, remaining to be helpful and so forth, but, uh, there you have it.
All right, I'm gonna, I'll go through, uh, David, what do you, what, you have a few minutes, you wanna share what your thoughts are?
Um, I mean, I guess it, you know, I, I understand, um, Stephen's points, and, uh, I'm also supportive of the formation of the district, but at the same time, I, in, in the information that I've been exposed to, and again, I'll preface by saying, you know, we got the bulk of this 20 minutes before the meeting, so I think it's premature for us to really definitively decide anything. Um, I haven't read all of this information. I trust Stan's judgment, and quite frankly, as someone who was involved with the survey at the very beginning of this project, this is kind of exactly where I expected it to end up. So I'm not surprised by Stan's view because it was what my expectation was going to be for our town. But, um, I don't want to do it a disservice by not actually reading all this information and giving it actual thought. So tonight is too early to decide definitively whether we want to be in on this or not from my standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Gwen, can I have your opinion? Gwen, you have to put your, your, uh, your mute.
It wasn't.
There you go. All right. What's your?
I just think, you know, Brookline, 95% of the people have internet available. I just, I, I just don't know. I really don't know.
Okay. Um, Guy, what's your opinion?
Well, I'd like to speak as a Wyndham Regional Commissioner. Uh, there's a couple of issues here. Number one, uh, the people in, in Brookline who don't have internet have chosen because of either they don't want to have it, or, uh, I don't think it's a, a financial thing. Basically, you're either covered by Comcast, who has a special program for those who are low-income people, plus you have, there isn't a place in town that Hughes Network cannot supply internet service to. So I'm a little, uh, concerned about, you know, having our town join in that particular, um, uh, thing. The, 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 the Deerview, the Valley thing is a private company that's gonna offer what already has been offered by Hughes Network, uh, Dish Network, and so forth.
Thank you, Dave.
I, I just don't understand why we would need to spend any more time, um, discussing this because I feel that everybody who's covered is covered, and those who do not wish to be covered are of their own choosing.
All right, thank you, Guy. Fair enough. And Bruce, last but not least, and then I'll go back to David.
Okay, um, hmm, okay, a question for Stan. You said, Stan, that you figured that there were 26 people that are not getting coverage in, in this area in town? Is that what your guess is? I'm sorry?
Two, two different sets of statistics. One shows four, the other one shows 26. I have no idea which one is more accurate than the other.
Okay, so, so it maxes out at 26?
Max.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm concurring with a number of different views. I'm concurring with what David had to say. I'm concurring with what, what, um, what, um, Guy had to say. Cause all the time you guys are all talking, I'm thinking Hughes Network, Hughes Network, you always, cause I, I don't have, I have Comcast, but I could have Satellite Dish if I wanted to have it. Uh, but anyway, and there's also Consolidated, if you want to go that route, rot's a ruck. Don't do that. But anyway, there's plenty, I think in a lot of ways, I'm agreeing with Guy because there are a lot of choices for people in this town. And if you notice, we haven't had any complaints from people, why can't I get Comcast, or why can't I get internet in town? I, as far as I know, if, I don't know if anybody else has heard of a complaint. So I don't know. I'd like to re, I'm with Dave in one respect. I think I'd want to read it over again because I didn't, I didn't read up all this, and I'd like to read it. But I think I'm really bending towards where, where, um, I and Stan are going.
Okay, thank you. All right, so last, last but not least is me. Um, yeah, I was looking at the numbers and I pulled out of some of those statistics, and, and one of the things it did said it needed, you needed a town meeting vote on number 10, how does a town join a CUD? So that wouldn't occur to March anyway.
No, no, no. That's the first half. The second half says, after the first organizational meeting of the CUD, a vote of the select board will allow, uh, membership.
Okay, well, like, I think, like you said, we should, um, the other thing I wanted to point out is, at some point in the near future, we hope that we would have the American Jobs Plan, and I was looking at broadband, uh, infrastructure improvements in Vermont that might occur. So what I'm hearing is, people need a little more time to read. We will miss the annual meeting cutoff, we'll have no representation at the May 11th meeting, uh, but we could put it on the agenda for, um, May 12th to, after we've read it and touched base on this again. Uh, I would like to take the fiber, the Wi-Fi hotspot, and the Green Mountain Power Resiliency information that we've collected and pass it on to our planning commissioner so that they are aware of some of these programs, and it is their purview as well to be aware of it since they think they've developed a town plan. So David wants to speak? Go ahead, David.
So a couple of things I just want to clarify. First, our next meeting is May 19th, not the 12th.
Nineteenth.
Just to be clear.
I'm sorry.
Um, that's okay, that's okay. Um, the other thing, and I'm sure that if Stephen's still here, he would want to say this, or will, would say this if he had the opportunity, to clarify a couple of things just for people to have in mind, Hughes Net and Consolidated and people like that are not broadband internet providers. That is not broadband internet. Comcast is the only broadband internet provider that serves our town. So if people don't have access to Comcast at their full service, they are, I believe, by this, all of these definitions would be unserved or underserved, even if they can get Consolidated. And as someone who has worked from home in the tech industry for a long time, I couldn't survive if my only option was Consolidated or Hughes Net. I am fortunate that I have Comcast as an option. That being said, I would be even in, in even better situation if there was fiber optic as an option, both from a service standpoint and for there to be competition like there are in larger places that would afford all of us better opportunity. So just because we may be served by a broadband service provider doesn't mean we couldn't benefit, even if we have it already, by there being another person involved.
Dish Network.
So, but we should give it thought and read everything, and we should discuss it at the next.
Um, I, I know.
All right, so I think that's what we'll do. I will add it to the May 19th agenda, uh, so to discuss the D V fiber information that was selected by, uh, Mr. Noga. And Stephen, if you'd like to join us again?
Yep, I'd be happy to join you again, uh, in the future, anytime. Uh, I also thought your idea, suggestion about the planning commission being involved was, was wise. That's certainly the primary, um, move that, uh, persuaded, uh, Townsend to join more, most recently. And Townsend has a lot of people that are well-served by, you know, formerly Southern Vermont Cable and now Comcast. But as, uh, David pointed out, uh, there's a, quite a bit of difference between a fiber symmetrical service, uh, download and upload, uh, compared with even the fastest cable opportunities. And that's what this is about. It's about a future opportunity for economic development and communications that, uh, you know, some people don't see any need for at this point, and I certainly can understand why. But I think people that are in, in business, uh, you know, easily recognize why the investment at this point would be, uh, you know, generously repaid, uh, in the future opportunities for economic, uh, communications.
All right, well, I, I think we need to move on. We have, uh, sort of overgone our, our time here.
I'll let you go. Nice to see y'all again. Good to see you, Guy.
Yes.
See you again soon. Thanks so much, Dan, for your, uh, initiative on this.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thanks, Stephen.
Excellent, excellent. All right, um, thank you, select board members. I know we, that was, uh, like 24 minutes on that, but, uh, I think it was important, and we got information from it. All right, uh, David, we're gonna move on to the recycling bins. Um, I can tell you, I know you asked me to find out about our insurance. If we were to own the bins, it would cost us an additional eight cents per $100 of value to insure them to stay on our property long-term. That was the insurance, uh, quote.
Right, yeah. So I mean, I, I talked to, um, Peter Gaskell at Triple T, and, you know, they would be, they'd be open to figuring out some kind of transfer of ownership of the bins if that was something that we wanted to do or thought was necessary to do. I think they'd just as soon avoid the paperwork and hassle of that if there's no need to do it. And based on the quote that Mike got, like you say, I mean, even if we massively overvalue these bins, it's gonna cost us like $3 on our, uh, insurance coverage to insure them. We're already covered for liability for them and the site. So I think we should put on the agenda for the next meeting to sign the, the transfer of ownership from the district to us for the bins, complete that and just be done with it. Down the road, and I did mention this to Peter, that, you know, down the road, if we ever stop offering recycling as a service, we would likely just give or sell those bins to Triple T anyway, um, which is fine and makes sense, but that, that doesn't, it, it doesn't seem like it's worth the hassle of having somebody draw up a transfer of ownership to Triple T if we can just own them and have it have a nominal impact on our insurance. So I think we should just do that.
All right, thank you. Let's see, uh, Bruce, what do you, would you like to say anything?
No, I think.
Okay.
Rare.
Gwen?
Shut up, Doc. Just keep Frida quiet. She's interrupting.
You know, to, um, uh, put on the agenda for next month, the, uh, to sign over the, uh, to sign the paperwork for, uh, the, from the Wigan Solid Waste Management District and the paperwork for that. Stan?
I, I'm sorry, the background noise is overwhelming. I, I missed the question. I, I want to make sure I understand it.
Um, we're going to put on the May 19th agenda to sign the contract to make ownership of the recycling bins from Wyndham County Solid Waste Management District because they are getting out of ownership of those bins, and insure them, uh, with our policy, which is eight cents per, per $100 of value.
Okay, so we're just looking to, you're asking me whether I would approve it being on the agenda for the 19th?
Well, you know what? You probably, I can, I will forward you an email of, of what we're talking about in more detail because you have, you were not around when we.
Right.
Got the information about, they wanted to, to, uh, our memorandum of, they were dissolving our memorandum of understanding when we first got the recycling bins. You don't want, so, so we are going to, we're going to sign off on it. That's what we're.
Right, right, right. I, I think I was listening either the last meeting or the meeting before, and that issue had come up. Uh, I got the impression that was it. I guess for, for the purposes of answering your question, are you making me to express an opinion about whether we should do that? Or are you asking me to put, if you're gonna, for approval, to put it on the agenda for next meeting?
I rotate through the select minutes since we're on Zoom, since you don't have a chance, we don't have that interaction, so, uh, I'm just asking you if you have anything to add to this.
No.
Conversation.
Okay.
All right. I don't want anybody to feel left out with the, the way these.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll sign that. All right, very good. Um, Sand and Salt Shed Project, David, any update on that?
Um, no, we're still waiting for, uh, New Fane's review to come back from V-Trans. Uh, there's been no update on that, and until there is an update on that, we don't really know what changes we might need to make, and then ultimately we'll have the discussion about whether it will even make sense to put it out to bid this year, or if we may wait until next year. But it's just in a holding pattern for right now.
Okay, do you think, um, that this should be on the agenda, or do you want to wait and let me know later on in the month?
I'll let you know. I mean, as soon as I hear something, if I hear something, we have no idea how long that we, I think our contact at V-Trans thought that the feedback would have come already, but for whatever reason, it hasn't, so I don't know what that means.
Okay. Um, Bruce, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Uh, Stan? No? Okay, Gwen? No? Okay. And me either, thank you very much. I, I realize that we're, we're waiting on the new thing, so, uh, yep, that, we'll put that table it for now, or, or wait till we find out, uh, if we put it on the next agenda. All right, the next item was, uh, Green Up Day, and, um, do we, do we know how much material was collected?
Uh, I will, I will speak up to that.
Oh, good, Mark, yes.
Yeah, this is Mark Bills, and, uh, yeah, we had, um, several people showed up, uh, for Green Up Day, and, um, there was already some, some bags that had been collected the night before and a few tires. Um, however, we, we spent today, uh, concentrating on the very worst places, which was Putney Mountain and Ellenware Road. And, um, we gathered up some recliner chairs and some cabinets, a swimming pool liner, propane tank.
Propane tank.
So, uh, these were rolled down over the steep, steep banks up on Putney Mountain. Um, so we, we had, I feel we had. Um, so we, we had, I feel we had great accomplishment for Green Up Day with the people that we had. And um, so at the end of the day, we had one full dump truck load. And, and by Monday morning, there was still more stuff that showed up at the uh roadside. So I, I went and made a, a fresh loop Monday morning and picked up another pickup load of, of garbage bags. So um, stuff was accumulated all weekend in the green bags. And uh, so Monday morning, uh, made two trips down to the landfill and uh, Wyndham Solid Waste and uh dispersed everything. And the, the total bills to the two loads came to just under $200.
Okay.
And uh, so I didn't know if that $200, I don't know if we budget for that or if it just comes out of uh somewhere in the budget, but might be an area in the budget to uh remember uh at the time that we put into budget.
Yeah.
And I think, Mark, that's pretty consistent, what it's cost us the last few years, right?
Okay.
Hasn't it always been, I think, I think so. I'm pretty sure it's usually been about $200 the last couple of years anyway. So yeah, I think you're right. We could probably make that something that we actually budgeted for. That's a good idea.
Okay.
All right. But, but no, I, I feel it was a very successful uh Green Up Day. I uh did see a few other people come out and there, and obviously there was people working at it beforehand and after.
Mm-hmm. Right. I was, I was on Ellenware Road on Sunday and there were a couple peoples down over uh, down into the ravine picking up stuff as well. So I was glad to, to see it continued over Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Well, thank you very much. I saw a picture um, uh, of the Green Up Crew that met at Town Hall and I did see the truck filled of materials. So that was an awesome undertaking. Um, and I will uh, uh, contact Timbo and thank him again for, for his involvement. And I guess that was a pretty smooth transition, Jay, David, with Timbo.
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't know how smooth it was because I didn't give him a whole lot. He didn't have a whole lot of time. And I don't know how particularly helpful I was to him, but I think he did a great job stepping in and stepping up and doing it. And, you know, thankfully, we're lucky that we have Mark who consistently comes out and does a ton of work for it. And Guy is there to be able to help with all that. And Archie gives us his truck and, and a bunch of, you know, Tom Brooks and a bunch of other people who consistently come out for it, made, uh, made up for the, what might have been a little bit of a lack of organization at the end. But, but yeah, big thanks to Timbo for stepping up and doing that and, and everybody else.
A minute, Timbo, name?
Uh, Timbo, T I M B O. Uh, his surname is Madalena, which I'm pretty sure is M A D D E L E N A hyphen Lucy, L U C E Y. Or some facsimile thereof, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
When I go into the town office tomorrow to see Guy, I can bring a copy of an email that he sent that.
Well, right. That's what, yes, I did see that. Yes. From, from Julie LaVorg. I'm trying to think. Wait a minute. I did read, read some information. So too much in my head. Good. All right. Um, nothing else on the TBD. That stayed empty. Now we'll move on to summary updates, reports. Mr. Tanza?
I want to reiterate that Timbo did a great job and all the people that worked Saturday morning worked incredibly hard. Mark, Jai Swing, uh, Tebow, everybody. It was a great uh effort. And they certainly, they sure as hell filled up that big truck again. And as Dave said, we're basically around $200, $225 each year. And that might be a good idea to add to the budget. As far as the town office, we sold a 67 dog license so far. Um, and uh, you know, it's slow and uh, people are, are getting the idea. Part of the problem is that we haven't had the rabies clinic yet and we're still trying to get ahold of the doctor from Marlboro to um, see if he can do a rabies clinic either late this month or early June so that we could do it outside. Everything is contingent upon Governor Scott's lifting of all the declarations of uh emergency. So um, we're moving forward and as I said before, it's important that people do register their dog. Any event something goes wrong, the dog takes off, or that they need to have a current rabies certificate and the license is almost like a, a thought goes off in your mind says, oh, I need to see if Fido has got his rabies certificate. So it's a good thing. Uh, other than that, though, we're still busy with um refis and um sales of homes. Inventory is somewhat stymied in Brookline because I think we've sold pretty much everything that was for sale, but things happen every day. But other than that, things are running smoothly and Gwen is doing the, the books, uh, trying to uh digitize the land records books. It's a very slow process, but far less expensive than having a major corporation come in at this point.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, so I have a short report. I had some contact with Mike Masters, our treasurer, trying to look for some money. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Um, I do have to sit down with him. Now, in the past, David, last year before the end of the fiscal year, um, did you have Samar? Samar, I forget how we handled this. At the end of the year, we're trying to figure out if deficits and surpluses, did we have a treasurer come in and talk to us or?
No. Uh, last year was unfortunately a year that we didn't really have a treasurer for certain part. We didn't, we rarely got financial reports. And the, the fiscal year didn't actually get closed and figured out until Samar was going through it in January. Um, so, and she was making a lot of corrections to things that had been. So last year was particularly messy. I do think at this point, we should be expecting that we should be getting at least monthly financial reports. And maybe we just, that serves as a discussion point with Mike about things, if there are things that you've identified that you think are allocated wrong. Is that what, I guess I'm not exactly sure what your questions are, but.
Well, I just wanted to know, uh, at the end of the year last year, I can't recall.
At the end of the fiscal year or the calendar? Yeah.
The fiscal year.
June 30th.
Something that is. Right. But so this year, June 30th is a month and a half, you know, a month, two months away about. And it, is there anything that we should do to, well, I'll, I'll sit, I'm going to plan on sitting down and talking with Mike so I can understand uh the current budget since I wasn't part of developing it and see how it is, how we're going to end up the year. That's what I'm concerned about, ending up the year. Because it looks like some of the items are, are way over budget and some of the things, very little, are under budget for the year. The actual budget on some items are like 135% or 413% and I just get a little nervous. So I'll sit down and talk to him. And I was thinking about uh inviting him maybe in June just to summarize what's going on before the end of the year.
Um, I mean, I guess I would just say from my standpoint, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think it might be a good thing for us to discuss as a board what those specific things are even sooner than that because we may need to address those prior to the end of the year if they're. I mean, I do know that, I mean, we'll see, you know, go back historically, there are always a bunch of items that we tend to go over on or under on. We're, we've never been as a town particularly stringent about individual line items with the, in the accounts, especially on the highway side of things. Um, but, you know, we, and, and, and we may at some point need to, at Mike's discretion, we may want to bring Samara into the discussion a little bit if she's willing just because of course Mike has very, very, very little historical understanding of how things have gone before. But, and, and that's fine. Maybe he doesn't need it. Uh, but it might be useful.
Okay. I, I agree. I think we need to get a handle on it. So I'll, I'll see what I can, reports we can have before our next meeting on May 19th. Have an email so that we have some there. I'll put, I'll put some time in for us to discuss it. And if there are any questions that we can have, develop and then invite the treasurer in on the first to see if that, that will help.
I think that's a good idea. I think that, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Um, the other thing I have here, um, oh, as far as the ACE animal control hat, I, there was a cat that was picked up on um, last week and was brought to Wyndham, uh, Heidi Wynott's veterinary clinic. Uh, they happened to be open on Wednesdays, last Wednesday this was. And uh, the cat was in very poor shape and I spoke to them and they were going to keep the cat overnight. They hydrated it. They kept it warm. But in the morning, when I was going to transport it to the Humane Society, I spoke with Dr. Wynott and we decided that it was best for the cat to euthanize it. So I signed off and the cat was euthanized. It really would have very poor quality of life, would not be adopted. And it was an older cat. So that was the first time I've done that. But uh, the veterinary clinic um will absorb the cost of that, that uh procedure. And last but not least, um, yesterday afternoon around 1 o'clock, I went over to the Brookline Meeting House. Uh, uh, Leanne Parker was and Dan Trapp Tower, Bruce, you came, and also some members of the Athens and Wardsborough Historical Building came to take a look at our meeting house. And they did a little uh roundtable. I only stayed for a short period of time because I had another appointment to go to. Um, but I think Leanne had a very good handle on the building. I was very proud of how, of what she had to say and how she described it. And I guess they went on a tour after I left, but she did an excellent job. And so we have a, an email blast now between historical meeting houses and buildings in Athens and Wardsborough and Brookline. There was a question, and I think I brought this up earlier this year. Why doesn't our Historical Society Committee also handle the Brookline Meeting House or be involved in that? Because that's a historical building as well.
Dot?
Yes.
I remember this discussion, maybe Stan does too. I think it was like four years ago that we were considering combining the two. And I forgot what the reason was to split, to keep it separate. But um, that, that's all I remember.
Anybody have any recall, recollection about that? Stan?
Yeah, we had.
Well, okay, sorry. So I can give a more recent.
Oh, okay.
Um, we had a discussion with, maybe two years ago, we had a discussion with the Meeting House Committee um, about, and also with what constituted the Historical Society at that time about potentially merging those committees. Uh, there, I think it's fair to summarize by saying there wasn't, neither group really thought it made sense because uh, at various points in time, one or the other of those committees have been pretty much non-existent. And they haven't really lined up in the same way. At the time that the, that the Meeting House Committee was very active, there was essentially no Historical Society meeting. And there has been a time when the reverse was the case. So I think it seemed to everyone involved that the structure that each of them had worked in the way that each of them were comfortable with it working and why overcomplicated and potentially drive away the rare people who were willing to be part of one or the other.
I hear you.
So.
That makes sense. Uh, Stan, you said you, did you say you had something to say?
Yeah, we had addressed the same issue as Bruce briefly referenced uh a moment ago back in 2012 or 13. Uh, and it was clear that the, the two boards, um, although it's a wonderful idea and probably makes a lot of sense regarding numbers on a particular type of issue in a small town, it, it, it uh didn't seem to make sense to either group.
All right. All right. Um, that's, that's fine. I just thought a question came up from, from someone from Athens, I think it was, that asked us why. And I was like, no, I'll ask. Um, all right. I guess that's the.
They're in a different ballgame. They only got that one building that I'm aware of. So they're, they're new and they only have one entity. So from an outsider perspective, I can see why.
That's what it was. Right. All right. Well, that's it that I have for my select board. Now we can go to Bruce, the building commissioner. You want to talk about town hall basement cleanup?
Yeah, um, we've already discussed it. We have to decide whether we're going to do it or not. But I'm definitely on the board. I really, I mean, on board being wanting to do it for all the reasons I gave before. But before we do it, I want to have a two-week period that there's no mice coming into the, into the building. And that's why I'm going to ask for my hero, Mark Bills, to help me with that. Mark, can you give me a call tomorrow night? I got a couple of things I want to talk to you about. Will you be around?
Sure. Yeah, I will call you.
Okay, appreciate it. Um, but um, it's pretty simple stuff that we're planning on doing. It's just matter of sealing the building, waiting two weeks and see if we have any interference. And if the town wants, if the select board wants to go forward with it, um, well, we have to decide that. Um, Dot and I spoke about the ways, how to fund it. And uh, Dot, I'll let you speak to that and see what your thoughts are and then I'll move on.
Well, um, I did talk with Mike about, you know, what accounts had, money from heaven I asked him for. And he, he shared with me and highlighted three different accounts which have not been depleted. Um, however, for example, um, town trash removal has $500 budgeted and nothing was spent on it. So there's $500 there. There's town property maintenance, which has $320, but we're going to have grass mowed between now and, and the end of this fiscal year. And uh, supplies and postage had, has about two grand left in it. And there's also, it's not on here, but there's also a capital improvement fund too. So um, I think, I, I believe the select board, and I will survey each of you to find out whether or not we should be moving forward with, uh, I think Bruce, we need to secure money for Surf Pro bill and the preemptive mice blocking, the, the work that has to be done around the foundation to prevent mice from getting into the basement in the first place.
For the latter, it's nominal.
What are you looking for? Like, well, between Surf Pro and that 2,500, right?
It's 2,300 and the, the uh, uh, the stuff I'm going to ask uh Mark to help me with is pretty nominal. It's not expensive at all.
So maybe another couple hundred dollars.
Not even that. We're talking caulk concealer and, and that's about it. It's, it's not, it's not, it's not that much. There's not much expense involved at all. It's more labor.
All right.
More, more Mark's, Mark's time, I would imagine, inside a couple of hours uh would, would really do the job.
All right. Uh, do we need to, we don't need to vote on me doing the caulking and sealing for the, no, that's a basic.
And we just have to find out where the money is going to come from, where we're going to take it from.
All right. Well, uh, um, that would be one of the specific questions that we're going to ask for, from our treasurer, be more specific on that. Um, but uh, I, you know, let's survey the about, about moving forward on getting this project started. Is there anyone on the select board who is against moving forward on cleaning up the basement?
Dot, can we, can we go through person by person? Because I have a bunch of questions.
Absolutely.
And we haven't really discussed this. Um, I mean, Bruce has gave us sort of his thinking and then pointed us. I mean, Bruce has gave us sort of his thinking and then pointed us to the CDC article to read, but we haven't asked any questions about it as far as I'm aware. So I guess the first question is, anybody else who does this kind of work other than Surf Pro? Is there anybody else who might give us a price to do it?
That's a fair question. I don't know.
Maybe there isn't. I'm just, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I think like everybody, probably 20, and what is the quote? The quote is, is it literally 2,300?
Some odd dollars.
Yeah. I mean, that seems like an enormous amount of money to clean up that space. I mean, I went, I hadn't been in there in a while, but I went in there this morning and walked around and looked around the basement. And yeah, there's a fair amount of mouse droppings in a variety of places. But I guess I'd be curious what their hourly rate is and how many hours they think it's really going to take to clean that up for 2,300 dollars.
Fair, fair answer. If I can cut in just for a second, Dave. I assume you didn't go into the crawl space?
I shone a flashlight into the crawl space and looked around.
Yeah, but you gotta, you really gotta look all the way around it. It's a mess. But I can get you a copy of, of Surf Pro's estimates so that you can take a look at it closer.
Okay. And I guess my, yeah, I mean, my other question is, right, we, if, if we were going to do that, we have to figure out where that money's going to come from. Because obviously, we don't have anything budgeted for this, for something like this.
Right. Anything else, David? That's a good point.
Well, and just to Bruce's point, and I'm sure everybody's on board, we, we shouldn't even entertain doing anything about it until we're positive that we have completely made it so that no mice are going to get in there.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Gwen, do you want to add to this?
I've been the one that's been dealing with these mice things. And I think it's really important to at least get rid of them. I'm still got mice droppings in the bathroom that I wipe up every day that I'm there. So they're definitely still coming in. And Guy and I've cleaned it up, not realizing how toxic cleaning up that mice stuff was. So it's done professionally.
Yes. But I, to, to be fair to, to, to David's point, Gwen, we should, we should look at the cost per hour and, and consider if there's somebody else who can get a better price and do the same job. There's nothing wrong with that either. I don't know of anybody, but that's, nothing wrong with that.
I agree. I agree wholeheartedly. I thought the price was really high. I said, for such a small basement.
Me too.
Me too.
Stan, what do you think? Any suggestions or comments?
I, I would suggest we locate search whatever to see if there is another party that's interested. And from past involvement, I know there was always a hesitancy to suggest what a bid was until we had a number of bids so that others didn't know what they had to do to beat a number. Because you don't know how low it could possibly go as a cautionary future reference. So I, I guess, you know, I think it's a dangerous situation. Certainly Gwen and Guy have borne with it quite some time. I do recall that when I was looking into the school, coming back to the town and looking at the loan documents that we needed to look at to see what the state had put in for requirements back when. I and one other select board member at the time were down in the basement digging through the boxes on the shelving, and everything was covered. It was, it was nasty. And the side room as well, that's empty. I have no idea what the crawl space is. I can only imagine. So is it worth?
Not good.
Yes. If we can get money from whatever accounts without hurting the purpose and function of those other monies, I definitely think it should be done. And again, I think we should see if there are other firms that do the same amount of work and solicit a bid from them.
All right. I concur with that as well. All right. So Bruce, if we could get a, see if there's another company out there? And also maybe make a copy of, of what the estimates were.
Surf Pro's estimate? Yep, I'll do that.
Okay. Anything else on the town hall?
Not on the town hall, no.
Anybody else would like to make a comment before we move on to the daycare? Stan?
I don't know what Bruce's time constraints is. I know he's about ready to go away and so forth. If Bruce was tied up really tightly and wanted some help looking for another firm, I'll offer my time to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Stan, because I'd, I'd have no time this week without a doubt.
Okay.
It wouldn't be until well after I came back. So that'll be helpful. Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, will do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. If, if I need to have someone come in, if they offer to come in to give a bid, would it be, have you done it on a Tuesday or Thursday? Or have you found a way to get in otherwise?
Week, I know I have a key. You, you'll get a key. So you can go in whenever you want. But I can't remember, I can't remember if Gwen and Guy were there when I came in with, with Surf Pro. No, I don't believe they were. I usually try to pick a day that, I think I picked, no, I pick a day when they're not there in order to, in order to not to interfere with what they're doing.
And, and whatever day that they were available, if Bruce can't go, I can go or something like that. We can certainly have somebody there to let them in and look it over.
And Stan, if you want to stop by the office tomorrow, I'd be more than happy to give you a key.
And sign. Oh, all right. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the town hall? All right. We'll move on to daycare building?
Okay, just one point. Don't have to worry about the round schoolhouse. We've already talked about that. Daycare's pretty simple. Everything's stabilized. We're using one UV system. I've been keeping an eye on it. It's still working, not fouling up. And as of the end of last week, it looked like we had our first shot of salts go through the systems for the water system. And it appears at this point, we're not going to have to spend a lot of money on salt. Because it's going at the present, present rate, if we're lucky, maybe a bag a month, but that's preliminary. There's only, only one other thing. Guy and I realized that Nancy Burke had come in and tested the water at the first part of March and came right back in April. And we were like, what? And it's supposed to be quarterly. And a response, Guy emailed at her, or voicemailed at her, and her response was, I just have to get it within each quarter. I don't think that's really very good. Neither did Guy. I mean, if you're, if you're getting paid to do it every quarter, do it every quarter three months apart. The last time was the middle of November and then she waited too well into, into March to do the water test. And then a month later, she's doing another water test. And we're paying 95 bucks a pop for it. I understand what the state wants, do it within the quarter. But I think Guy mentioned that he was going to respond back to her and ask her, I'm not speaking for Guy, so he's got to speak for himself, that he was going to ask her to give us a schedule and, and kind of stick to the schedule instead of doing it when you feel like doing it, just because it's in the quarter or at the beginning of the end of the quarter. But Guy can speak to that in a second. But as far as everything else, I'm good. I think I don't have anything else.
I can't believe it. All right. Good. Good job, Bruce. All right. All right.
Guy was all right.
You were correct. Yes, I did send her an email. She responded saying that she does it quarterly. I responded saying, well, you did it November of 2020, March of 2021, and April of 2021. And she says, well, we do it every quarter and I guess we're good until the third quarter of 2021. And at that point, I just didn't respond. I guess she's satisfying the state's needs. As long as we only have it done four times a year, I guess that's the way we have to go. Maybe she has a scheduling conflict or something, but the bottom line is she has to do it once a quarter. It doesn't stipulate when the quarter starts or when the quarter ends, but that's the answer I got from her.
Okay, we haven't, we haven't had a failed water test since 2017, knock on wood. My head's getting rattled. So, well, I guess, I agree with you. Leave it be. We get our $395 bill for the year and live with it.
Stan, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I felt, I guess, as Bruce and Guy do, that it seems odd one would do it a month later. And now there's going to be no test until the fall, which may not be to the advantage of the children in the daycare or the employees over there. I don't know what additional liability that might create or questions if someone, it became an issue. But it would be nice if she could be cajoled with it, like the first week of the quarter, every quarter. So you know, it's an appropriate distance in time as to, as opposed to what you're condensing it. So I, I guess I feel like Mark, I mean Bruce and Guy. And I'd also like to thank Bruce for taking me on a tour of that daycare over the weekend. It was very informative and I muchly appreciated that.
Fair enough. Reaction to, if I can react to what you're saying, Stan, I believe she has to come back in July. It's every quarter. So we got, she can't wait till October. So it has to, has to be July.
You're right.
Well, no, she could, she could come back in September. She has to come back sometime within the third quarter, which is between July and September.
You're correct. Yes.
I mean, to your point, not that I'm, I, I'm not arguing that we should really mess with it. Because quite frankly, she's the one who's following the process that satisfies the state. If we, you know, if we have concerns beyond satisfying the state's requirements, which quite frankly, I think has generally always been what we've cared about most, is that we satisfy the state's requirements for this, then why not let her do it the way she needs to do it with her schedule? Or we may find that her price, the prices may change for this at some point if we become more demanding on exactly when we want it to be. But you are correct that she could take it at the first, at the beginning of the second quarter like she just did, and not until the end of the third quarter. And it could potentially go five months without being tested technically.
But now, but now we've, we've got the water system straightened out. If there's a failed water system now, I give up. For water tests, I mean, I, I just give up at that point. Story over.
I, I did want to make point that under communications, I did get the email, the communication number two, daycare building water test, the chloroform and E. coli were both absent.
Saw that.
And I was going to suggest, if the select board wanted me to, I could send her a letter referring to a schedule or not. And we can wait to another time of the year or not. I'm just, you know, if that's something the select board would like to see on a tighter schedule, I can certainly reach out.
Dot, I'm under the opinion to leave it alone. Unless we start having failed, unless we start having failed tests, I'm not at all worried about the condition of the water that, that place like I just said a moment ago.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think we have a problem here. Just forget it. And let's just hope we solve the problem and never have an issue with it again.
All right. Anything else, Bruce, before I move on to highways and roads? All right, Mr. Bill, what can you tell us today?
Okay, I guess what I, what I have for you is we're, we're finally coming to the point where the roads have dried for another round of greater service. So in the next week or two, I will probably be adding some gravel over the, we put a lot of stone down and a lot of that stone has packed itself into the roads. And some areas where it was heavily stoned, we need to add just a little bit more finished gravel over the top for a smoother transition for vehicles. So that is on the agenda. I've made arrangements to get gravel. We've had quite a bit of wind damage, spring, you know, windy, tree damage that I've gone around and kept out of the road, roadways. But there's a lot in the ditches that I'm working on removing. I've spent some time earlier going around making sure all of the culverts were open during the winter, the late fall, winter months. When the leaves came up, they tend to layer and pack over the top of the culvert so that the water doesn't flow through them the way it's supposed to. So I, I've spent quite a bit of time opening up the, the roads that were closed through the winter. And, and so, and the other thing I'm doing, you know, it's cleaning up the, the wind damage, the winter damage is making it kind of prepping for the, our summertime roadside mowing program. So I've, I've, I've got that in mind while I'm cleaning up the roadside that will be coming through with the mower. Now, Dot, I just had one question on the roadside mower there. I appreciate that you got the information back to Brenda at Fairfield. And I, I didn't know if she ever did get a copy of the town insurance for the.
I got, I got an email from Mike Masters last Monday that that has been faxed over to our insurance people. I did not hear back from Brenda that she received it though, but I'll write to Brenda and ask her. Mike, the treasurer, has done what he was asked to do. All right.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate that. And, and that's, I guess, all I have at this time.
All right. Very good. All right. Mark, while, while you're there, would you stop in the office and sign an overweight permit?
Sure, I will do that. First chance of that. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll move on to communications. I had, there was one email from the Agency of Natural Resources for Stormwater, municipal roads annual fee permit for $500. Is this, is this something that, that happens every year to Guy or is something new? Has it been budgeted for? That's what I'm asking.
Uh, yeah, it happens every year.
Okay. So that, that came through. So you're aware of that. We talked about the daycare water testing. And I'm not sure if I actually registered properly for the ICS 402 for tomorrow morning. We'll find out if I can drop in on that. But that would be for the emergency planning for.
Hey, Dot.
Yes, sir.
One thing about the stormwater, the $500 stormwater permit fee. In the event that it comes, the question comes up, we actually own, we did not pay that last year. We were very, very, for some reason, we totally forgot about it. So we paid last year's only a couple of months ago, I believe. But that doesn't change the fact that we now owe for this year's. But in case they see a not long ago payment, that was actually a late one from last year.
Okay. Thank you, David. That's good. All right. So no regular mail. We're going to move on to pay orders. Excuse me. Let me get my file here. Okay, accounts payable. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Accounts Payable Warrant Number 2021-18, dated May 5th, 2021, in the amount of $11,528.72. May I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to ask, I'd like to ask a question about the summer road maintenance and gravel material with over $7,100. Is that normal every year? How many yards of that? Is that normal to order it now?
If I could, I'll just make the comment on that gravel bill. That's probably due to our mud seasons that came. We had one December 25th that washed the roads out. There was a couple of places on the Athens Road that we had to repair. Also, this year's mud season was out of the average, a little bit lengthier and muddier season where we applied a lot of crushed stone over these areas to, to get people in and out of town. So I think that number is probably high due to the severity of, of the mud seasons that we had through the winter and into spring late.
Right. I do have an email from, that, to the treasurer from Lynn Clark that, about that, checking the invoices and how much, how much was delivered. And he satisfied the, identified each of the loads and the number of yards pulled from the pits and the amount of trucking time. And it was due to the, the, the road conditions at that time when they were breaking down and from mud season. So they, they, there has been communication between the treasurer and the vendor about the amounts of the costs, but it has been due to, to the roads needing it at that time. Good, good question, Gwen. Any other questions? Stan?
Yes, I probably should abstain from participating in this vote since I know being online now, does the select board member need to go to the town office? The office stayed open before the vote is taken to see it? We never, we looked at it previously.
We, we, the treasurer emails it out to each of us.
Oh.
So we get a copy of the accounts payable and payroll. And, and I take it for this, but yes, you'll. All right.
I have another question. I have another question on the same question. It, this is listed under summer material. Wasn't that winter material?
The winter material historically, because I talked to Samara about this, winter materials historically was only for the amount of the contracted plowing and plowing for the town. And this, every other road material should be under summer material, even though it may have been used in the winter months for road maintenance. So it is a way in which the books or treasurer or sets it up. But technically, the winter, winter, winter roads is just the plowing and everything else should be summer material. Does that make sense?
But it's worth mentioning that given the increase in gravel and stone that's being used during the winter in recent years, especially this year, it would probably make sense for us to consider either changing the descriptions of some of those accounts when we go through our budget or changing our budgeting allocation between what we call, what we decide is an amount for summer materials versus an amount for winter materials. Since we're now presumably using a lot more of the material from the summertime in the wintertime. Hopefully, it nets out to be about the same amount of money total, but.
Necessarily.
We don't know if it's going to. Right. We may need, we may need to be increasing the amount of winter materials overall based on what this year was like.
Yes. Stan?
I hope I'm not speaking beforehand, but my agenda references pay order 2021-17. Is, is there another one that we're going to be okaying tonight? Or was that a leftover from the last meeting?
Well, right now, we're in accounts payable, which I just got today. And then we'll do payroll.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
The payroll goes out every two weeks whether or not we have a meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know. People want to make money. I don't know.
Yeah, I understand that.
Any other questions about accounts, about the accounts payable warrant?
Then I just clarify one more thing for Stan's benefit, though, is that this, the treasurer sends out to us via email the summary sheet for the payroll warrant and the summary sheet for the accounts payable warrant. They do not send us scans of all of the invoices that constitute the backup to the accounts payable invoice, which is why in this context, Dot, to look at the backup questions about the details of any of those charges. We're not going to get electronic copies of all of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Right. So, all right. So we've made a motion and we've seconded, we've had discussion and all those. So now we'll vote all those. I'll do a roll call vote because Stan will probably abstain. He mentioned all those in favor of approving the pay, accounts payable warrant 2021-18 dated May 5th, 2021 in the amount of $11,528.72. David, how vote, how do you vote? Yeah, your name. Hi, Bruce?
Aye.
Gwen?
Aye.
Stan?
Abstain.
Dot, I vote aye. All right, so the accounts payable warrant passes with one abstention by Mr. Stan Noga. Everything okay? Peter, did you get those figures?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payroll warrant 2021-17 in the amount of $1,924.30. May I have a second?
Is it open to discussion or do you need the second?
After the second.
I'll second it.
All right, David seconded. Any discussion? Gwen?
Yeah, my question is, I don't know, I noticed no, no name for Mark's payroll. Doesn't, is, doesn't he work every week? Isn't he required to put it in every two weeks like we are? I just noticed that I don't see his name on here.
Mark, do you have some, some request for salary from us or are you doing this gratis?
No. No, I will be sending in a bill probably within the next week.
Okay. If we could get it more regular than, if we could get it for, you know, every two weeks, that would be the, the, the best way to do it so we keep on top of the, the costs associated with the different accounts. Mark, if we can help you in any way, that would be appreciated. All right?
Okay, I will try.
All right, thanks, Mark. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to do a roll call on this. All those, those, I'd like to make, I may need the motion. All those in favor of approving the check warrant for payroll number 2021-17 dated April 28th, 2021, the amount of $1,924.30. David, how do you vote? Yeah, your name?
Aye.
Aye. Bruce?
Aye.
Gwen?
Aye.
Stan?
Nothing personal to those being paid, but I should have said.
Okay, and Dot Maggio is aye. So the payroll warrant 2021-17 for $1,924.30 has passed with one abstention by Mr. Stan Noga. Okay. Let me get my end of the meeting. All right, so to set agenda, thank you very much. To set agenda, I have on for May 19th, DV Fiver, and Stephen John said he would attend if that needs to be, if we invite him. I have on the agenda to sign the transfer of ownership to the, from the district of the waste bins. I have for June, we'll discuss the budget on the May 19th agenda. I'll ask for electronic copies to be sent to all of us so that we can take a look at the different line items and where we're at. And in June, we'll add the Brookline, the round schoolhouse and the treasurer, a spot for the treasurer to attend the Zoom meetings to discuss the end of the year budget. If there's anything else, please call me or email me. And if it's something like the couple of days before a meeting and you want me to act on something, you know, give me a call at home and I can certainly see what I can do. But I try to, try to get the, I'm going to try to get the agendas out by Saturday or Sunday at the latest of the week of the meeting. All right, anything else? All right, how are we doing on time? Oh, pretty good. Only two minutes over. I'd like to make a motion to return the meeting. May I have a second?
So moved.
I heard a lot of seconds. I'm going to give it to Stan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of returning this evening's meeting at 8:30, 3:00 PM, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.